Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, June 17, 2024, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kerzak, will you please call this meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Publics Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coast and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before the Board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded on AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the future. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I will now take roll call. James Benano.
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton is absent. Eric Galloppo.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jeremy Hoffmann.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Daniel Shanamaya.
Here.
Jen Souter.
Here.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Here. All right, the first item on the agenda is a resolution for 900 Madison Avenue that was circulated to the Board. Anyone have any concerns before we take a vote? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve. Excuse me, is anyone eligible?
I'm not eligible.
Jennifer?
Jeremy and Jen and Daniel.
Okay, so we make sure the moving party's second then vote.
Yes, so Mike is eligible and second.
Second was Michael?
No, I moved.
Oh, second.
I'll second that.
Jim.
Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
Eligible Board members are James Benano.
Yes.
Eric Galloppo.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the application before us is for the Asbury Park Beach Club.
Before we get into this, we have some members that are recused from this application. Mayor Moore, Jim Henry, no one else. Please step down.
And I'm recused because I voted no the first time.
You voted no, Jim abstained from hearing the application.
Wonderful. All right, well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Phillips-Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC, and I am here tonight on behalf of Asbury Partners. Now, as I'm sure many of you recall, back in 2001, this Board voted to grant preliminary and final.
Jeff, can you move that mic away from you? This one here?
This one.
Close them to echo or something?
Sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
Not sure if that helped or hurt. Maybe move it to that table?
Yeah, I'll try.
Okay. Is that better? No?
Okay, let's go.
All right. I'm going. So here on behalf of Asbury Partners. Asbury Partners is the master developer for the entire waterfront redevelopment area, and as you will recall, back on November 15 of 2001, this Board voted to grant preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of a beach club to be located at Block 4502, Lot 1.23. We are here tonight on an administrative request, and that request is to extend the period of time for zoning protection. Now, you can't.
So, so we got.
So you've gone from too much to too little.
Should be voting.
Sure. Does that better? Okay. This microphone doesn't come any further, so I'll just have to lean in.
Or you can move the table closer. You can move the table closer.
All right, that's better. Now I won't be leaning over the table. Can everyone hear? Okay. I don't think I can get any closer to the microphone. So I'll proceed. We'll do the best we can.
Do the best we can.
All right. So before I bring up my one witness this evening, I'll just go over sort of the technical legal reason why we're here. This is for an extension of the period of zoning protection. What that allows under the municipal land use law is that when final site plan approval is granted, the applicant has two years that they are protected from any changes in zoning. That would mean if the ordinance changes during that time, you can still proceed to build the project. Now here, we're in a bit of a unique situation where the zoning is governed by the waterfront redevelopment plan, and that waterfront redevelopment plan actually cannot be changed without the redevelopment's consent pursuant to the redevelopment agreement. So it hasn't changed. It's unlikely it's going to change, but out of an abundance of caution, we are asking to extend the period of zoning protection from November 2023 to November of 2025. The site plan goes on even if you don't grant this extension unless until there is a change in zoning, which there likely won't be. But that said, we have been working to obtain all the approvals necessary to move forward, but there's one we have not yet obtained, and our witness tonight will describe that in greater detail. But in short, under the existing redevelopment agreement, there is to be constructed a private beach club and a public beach club. And under the subsequent developer agreement with Madison Asbury Retail, it indicates that in order for either one of those to be built, Madison Asbury Retail needs to consent, and my client needs to consent. We don't yet have that consent. As will be described, we've been working to obtain that consent, but as of right now, we don't have it. So we're asking for a longer period of extensions that we can keep working on obtaining that consent. So with that, I have only one witness this evening that's going to be very short, just to describe some of the efforts we've made and confirm for you all on the record, so it's not just me making representations.
Before you do that, do you understand? Anybody have any questions as to what our task is?
We just want to make sure that the audience also hears you, Jack.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. It's. So my understanding is the waterfront redevelopment agreement won't end for a few more years, right?
That's right.
Seven years or something like that?
There's, I don't know, I don't recall the exact date, but there's still time left. Yep.
So this is just like, you know, putting suspenders on what it helps?
Just in case. That's right.
So it has expired already? I thought you said November 23?
The period of zoning protection would expire, but there is a provision that allows you to extend when, both in any case, and then also when you don't have all of your approvals, which we don't have all of our approvals. You can actually continue to apply under that provision until 90 days after you receive the approval.
They're allowed to get up to three one-year extensions for a total of five years of protection under the existing ordinances that apply to the project when it was voted on. Technically, it's that zoning protection has expired already. Yes, technically, but that site plan has not expired.
All right, all right. Can we just have Jack explain it from the top down?
Site plan does not expire. Everybody's under the misconception that this section of the law is your site plan expires after two years. No, it does not. Site plan is indefinite. If the underlying law doesn't change, 10 years from now, you can still build this project, okay? The law allows for these three one-year extensions up to five years, and all that is, it gives the applicant the benefit of, if there are any ordinance changes, it protects them from that. But in this case, we've got that 360-degree turn that comes around that the only way that the ordinance can change is if the applicant consents to the ordinance will change. And essentially, that's it. It's, you just have to understand, they have to give you reasons that what they have done and they haven't achieved yet, it isn't like they've just sat back and done nothing. What has expired is the protection from the zoning change. Correct. That's all that expires. Okay. And with that being said, that's the.
And just for the public also that they understand is that we will deal with this just like we do any other, any other time someone comes with a witness to the planning board, where you will be able to ask questions of the witness based on what that witness has testified to, and only that. Once that's done, we also get another round, like every other application, you get to have a three-minute comment based on what's been discussed. So you will get an ability to question the witness based on what they've said, and then you can also come back for a three-minute comment at the end, just like with everything else that we do here. So, and also for clarity, we also, this is not a requirement. We don't have to do this, meaning the comments at the end, we don't have to. But as a Board, we feel that the public should, if they're coming here, they should have the ability to add, to make a comment at the end of a session. We have never denied that. So that's why we're doing it this way, no different than any other time that we do things. But that's a rule that we have as a planning Board for the transparency and the optics of what will be out there. You are able to comment for three minutes afterwards. Go ahead.
Thank you. Then I'll ask my one witness, Mr. David Fergal, to please come up.
David, please raise your, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sure. Is it on?
Hello? Yep.
Here's your red hand. You saw me swear or affirm that the testimony grabbed to give you this matter of true culture, but not the truth.
I do.
Please state and spell your name for us.
Sure, it's David Fergal, F-U-R-G-A-L.
Mr. Fergal, we are offering you as a fact witness this evening, so can you please describe your relationship to the project?
Sure. So I am a principal with Starfield Companies. Starfield Companies is right now the authorized agent, or and I am an authorized representative of Asbury Partners, the applicant for this. Plenty more hearing to me.
And have you been working on several of the projects in the waterfront redevelopment area for a number of years?
Yes, around 13 years.
And have you been working on the beach club project in particular?
I have. I was involved in both the design as well as the approvals.
Can you describe some of the efforts that Asbury Partners has made in order to obtain consent under the subsequent developer agreement to construct the beach club?
Sure. So we've reached out to MAR on a number of occasions, starting back in 2018. We sent them a letter on May 29, 2018, seeking MAR's consent to build a private beach club on this site. We followed up on that again with a second written request on October 14, 2018, and then Asbury Partners sent another letter requesting consent on March 14, 2022. Since then, both parties have engaged in a number of conversations regarding this. The last in-person meeting which took place regarding this topic was back in December of 2023, and the last conference call we had regarding this was in May 2024. Since then, negotiations remain ongoing.
And without MAR's consent under the SDA, are you, do you have all of the governmental approvals you need to build this project?
No, we do not.
That is all I have for Mr. Fergal.
Okay. No, does the planning board have any questions of the witness?
So, just flush out for me, but MAR is Madison Marquette entity, yes?
Yes, Madison Asbury Retail.
And you and partnership with that margin to some degree? I mean, I saw when they were with Asbury Partners.
As far as Asbury Partners, there is an agreement between the two, yes.
So you share interests in the development of the waterfront, yes?
Yes.
And actually, you have no other leverage over that?
I will just say that we are not able to discuss all the specifics of the negotiations, but they haven't yet resulted in an agreement on this topic.
You're not able to say what the problem is?
We're hoping.
Assistance to them getting.
Well, the easy answer to that is underneath, the answer to that, the easier answer, is underneath the subsequent developer agreement, they have to be willing to build the public beach club within 18 months after we start the private beach club.
So you would build private one, and then they all would build public?
That's what the subsequent developer agreement requires, and it requires the public ones to be constructed 18 months after the private.
Any other questions from planning board members of this witness? Go ahead.
You referenced that you have submitted all the permits you need from your government authority. What percentage of the permits do you have, and what percentage is?
Other than building permits, to our knowledge, this is the only one outstanding. We have DEP approval. We had received all other approvals from any ancillary agencies.
Any other questions from planning board members of the witness? Okay, anyone from the public would like to question this witness based on their testimony?
Good.
Oh, don't know, you have to go to the microphone, please.
I'll tell you how it works.
I have to give my address publicly?
And your name?
I'm not giving my address publicly. I'm on TV. If he gives his, I'll give mine.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm a young woman living in Asbury Park.
Are you, let's do it this way.
I live in the northwest section of Asbury Park, and I'm a resident.
Why don't you let me ask the questions first before you give me the answers?
It's a good question.
Are you a permanent resident of Asbury?
I am.
Go right ahead.
What's your timeline for getting your last approval?
Well, we continue to have, you know, conversations and negotiations with them. I can't provide a specific timeframe, but we are making progress.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Madeline Monaco. I live on Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park.
Okay, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Are you, if you're going to look at your phone, are those your questions?
These are my questions.
Or those questions that are being sent to you from somewhere?
No, I just wrote them myself as I was listening.
That's all I need to know.
Okay.
Are your questions, go right ahead.
Okay, so I don't forget them. I write them down.
Go right ahead.
So if Madison Marquette does not approve Asbury Partners' pool club plans, then can Asbury Partners build anything else on that site?
Well, interesting question. Under the, this is more of a legal question, so you don't mind if I answer that, but under the redevelopment plan, actually, sorry, under our site plan approval, this is the only thing that we have approved here. Under the redevelopment agreement, it's currently the only thing that's approved for that area. So we could seek to amend the redevelopment plan, we could seek to amend the redevelopment agreement. Both of those would require the city council to consent.
As it is today, as the logs is today, the only approval for that site is the one you have.
The only site plan approval.
And the only permitted use on that site pursuant to the current plan as it stands is the use that you have.
I don't recall if it's the only permitted use, but it is the one that's specified under the redevelopment agreement.
And I heard that the redevelopment plan, the 2002 redevelopment plan expires in X number of years. How many years is that? So how many years do you have to ask Madison Marquette for their approval? I guess is what I'm asking.
Actually, off the top of my head, honestly, do not recall the date that it expires. Truthfully, I just don't know the answer to that, but I know that it's still ongoing.
So if it, if, let's say it expires in three years. I don't know what it is, because we were very involved several years ago, but I haven't revisited all of that. If it expires in, say, three years, does that mean that you no longer have the right to build the pool club there?
It's an interesting question, but once the redevelopment plan expires, if the city council were not to re-up it, then we would have to look at what the redevelopment agreement specifies as far as our ongoing rights as a designated redevenir.
Okay. And then if Asbury Partners decides to sell that property, because there are, Asbury Partners is selling other properties in the waterfront area, if they decide to sell that, do the new owners still have the right to build the pool club? And obviously, they'd have to get Madison Marquette's approval.
So if we were to sell it, the first thing is, in order to sell that property, we would need the city council's approval under the redevelopment agreement, and, but the site plan approval would transfer to the new owner if it were approved by the city council to transfer.
Okay. I think those are all of my questions. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue. The first question I have is a clarification. Over the years, this has been referred to as both the beach club and the pool club.
That was not, just to be clear, that was not testified to today? So this is called the Asbury Park Beach Club. That's the name of the project.
Okay.
So that was not testified, so we have to keep it to what was testified to.
Okay. Well, I have another question, and I don't know whether this is pertinent or not.
Give it a shot. Give it a shot.
Okay. At the time of the planning board last meeting regarding this in November of 2021, just before that meeting, there was, there were new FEMA rules that had come out relating to concerns about flood zones and coastal flood zones. And just recently, there's a proposal before, New Jersey proposal, something called Real Resilient Environments and Landscapes, and I know it hasn't been passed yet, but I just want to know if that does get passed while all of this is going on, what potential impact might that have for any of the, for how this might proceed?
Jack, I'll leave that to you, whether that is a question that.
Well, I think Smith just testified that they have their DEP approvals and the like.
Right.
So I would think those approvals will apply to this project.
That's correct. The project is previously approved.
Go ahead. They already have, the project already has DEP approval. So they already, remember that we said that there were all these approvals that had to happen? There's one outstanding. That's the one that's being brought up. So the DEP approval has already happened. They already have it.
It happened before this law was.
That's correct. That's correct.
So if nothing is, you know, if this is still pending, let's say while the law is.
It's not pending. The approval has been granted.
So new laws will not impact it?
Well, I can't, I can't tell you because I don't know what the legislature is going to do. You're speculating on what the legislature may or not do. I can't either. Jennifer, you want to say something? That's fine. As far as I'm concerned, from a legal perspective, apply the law as it's written now, and how it applies to the project. If the state of New Jersey does something a couple of years from now, we'll find out if it has an effect on the project or not affect on.
I agree with your assessment.
Anyone else have a question that they would like to ask?
Hello, Jeff Lewisat, 1501 Ocean Ave. here in Asbury. Just a couple of questions really for the witness testimony. So I know you referenced a few different years, the first one being 2001, so 23 years ago. The witness then talked about the first letter from 2018, then a second one in 2018, but then brought up the fact that the last face-to-face meeting he had was in December of last year, followed by a conference call last month. So they are asking this committee to effectively extend even further. They've had six years?
Testify.
No, I guess what I'm trying to understand, specific to the testimony, what is taking so long with you and your partners then? I mean, what kind of business is this?
I don't know how to answer that question.
All right, I'm sorry. So what exactly is taking so long while we're extending so much further? You're asking the committee to extend even further, it seems to me, and probably everyone else.
Don't, no.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand if they could go a little bit further into depth.
Ask the question, and then let him answer it, and then you get a chance later on to talk about your feelings.
All right, so where do we leave in 2023 with respect to the meeting?
Last meet, the last.
Actually, I believe that he just testified that in a prior question, where, what was the last thing that happened? What's, what, that you're making, well, go ahead. You say it.
The last conference call we had discussing this was last month. All of the dates that I just mentioned, the timeline earlier, that doesn't include all the discussions that we've had to date or, you know, conversations regarding this. Those are just some key dates when we've either, you know, exchanged letters or we wrote letters to this or met in person, discussed.
Okay. So follow-up items are?
That, that's the only follow-up item, to get the approval or agreement, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Steve, you're up.
Anyone else have a question? Go ahead. No? Stand in line.
My name's Steve Saden. I'm from 1501 Ocean Avenue. My question is, has it always been, has there always been a link between a public facility and this private club, or is that a new development that's happened?
It's irrelevant if we're talking to Trump.
It is, it is irrelevant to what we're speaking about?
And why is it irrelevant?
Because that matter was discussed in length at the application. There were people who brought up, they wanted to discuss whether it's public-private, so whether it's a pool club or a beach club. This application received approval to build what's being proposed, whether you want it designated as a beach club.
I can't hear you.
Whether you want to designate it as a beach club or a pool club.
No, 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 no. I don't mean to, I'm not trying to confuse the issue. All I want to know is, there seems to be, there's been discussion within our building. Is there a, whatever we're referring to this now, a beach club? Is that what the term is?
What do you, how do you want to characterize what you're building? It's a matter of.
We've always called it a beach club.
Well, I think it's important. You've already said it's, what is this term we're using now?
It's called the Asbury Park Beach Club.
Okay, it's a beach club. Is the beach club, has there been also an issue of building a public beach club in addition to the private in two locations on the beach in order to allow that somehow they're joined so that they're, the necessity is for the project to go forward, both of those items have to be built?
The parties' obligations concerning the construction of a public or a private beach club are set forth in the redevelopment agreement and the subsequent redevelopment agreement with MAR, Madison Asbury Retail, and that sets forth the obligations of each parties for both a public and a private beach club.
I'm sorry. I wish I could hear her.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have to have my back to you. There's not, not a good way to do it.
To them.
Yeah, go ahead.
But it won't pick up on the mic.
Just go ahead.
Sorry. The obligations of the parties for a public beach club and a private beach club are set forth in the redevelopment agreement as to who needs to build what and when.
Are they related? Are they the same organization that's building both?
It is not the obligation of the same organization. The subsequent development agreement with Madison Asbury Retail provides that the private beach club is to be constructed by Asbury Partners, and the public beach club is to be constructed by Madison Asbury Retail.
Okay, so they're not contingent on one another?
Each party needs to consent to the construction of the other.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Sorry. We just have to keep order, that's all. Go ahead.
Dave Michelson, 1501 Ocean. A couple of things in the continuing vein, does, they're negotiating now with that other entity, the one who's supposed to build a public pool. Does that have to be built before this, or just the approval from it to be built?
I'll say it, I'll say, okay.
Is there a timeline on what's built and when?
Once the private beach club is, commences construction, the public beach club has to commence construction within 18 months.
Oh.
But neither can commence without the consent of the other party.
Okay. Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that. I had another question, but it's gone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Hi, Carrie Butch, 500 Dale Lake Drive. Is it likely that if this. Is it likely that if this zoning lapsed and there was another application, that it would be turned down due to new regulations that the DEP has and the EPA has? Is that, or FEMA, is it likely because of where it's at and the flood zone and everything else like that, that it would get turned down?
Though this, that really has nothing to do with this, but we can't predict the future.
No, it does have something to do with this, right?
It doesn't. It doesn't. DEP has already approved this.
And the fact that they said what they said, and they're asking for extensions. If they ask, what happens in the future will happen in the future. We don't know.
Okay. Because the last time I remember, we were, I think Donna was leaving and saying that she was going to come back to the table with certain information. That was the former city manager about...
It's got nothing to do with, you're telling us things about somebody that's not here. Ask the question of a witness's testimony, and we'll make sure they answer it.
Okay. I'll ask, I'll ask a question. Do you recall the last time we got together in a public forum that the city manager was going to...
That, that wasn't a planning board.
Nothing to do with this. Here, this year. Nothing.
I would hope it would all be related. Shaq, I would hope it would all be related because it all matters, right?
How you testify?
All right. I apologize for testifying.
I'm sorry, but we have to have certain rules to do this.
Stay relevant.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Hello. Kathleen Muma, Sunset Avenue. I would just like to make sure I understand the term zoning protections. So does zoning protection, that means that right now the land is zoned to be a beach club? Is that what, is that what the protection is for?
Yes.
Okay.
In the redevelopment plan, there's a whole series of regulations that pertain to this project. That's, that's what there is for the protection of those rules going full for another two year, for a two-year period commencing in November of '23 to November of '24.
Okay. So the zoning protections that come along with the project are in the redevelopment plan agreement?
The rules that apply to this are in the plan.
Okay.
And that's, that's what there is for those rules.
In the plan, that's public information, like the one from 2002 that we can look at on the website?
Sorry?
The one that's on the, on the public website that we can look at?
I don't know if it's there. It is, it is the existing redevelopment.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Normally, we do not allow a second round, but...
Oh.
But you did say...
I had a second question.
You forgot one.
At my age, it's...
Go ahead.
Just repeat your name.
Dave Michelson, 1501 Ocean. The question was, during the proceeding several years ago, I thought that the redevelopment agreement referred to that property as, as allowing the structure, the construction of a pool club.
You're bringing up, that's...
I mean, you're referring to it as a pool club.
That was not discussed today.
But that issue was long ago vetted out. The difference between the two is semantical.
Is it? Because there's no direct access to the beach.
We are not, that is not what this is about.
We're not here to reopen this case. That was decided. This project's been approved. Has it exists now? And it's permitted under the plan. It was permitted then, and it's permitted now.
Okay. Thank you.
Not going into the discussion. Thank you.
Stephen Levinson, 1501 Ocean Avenue. Thanks for the clarification on the timeline that you're talking about. The pool club or beach club be commencing construction and then the secondary one within 18 months. My question is, since you're working on getting these approvals, what type of protection does the city of Asbury Park have that the second club will actually be built after whatever agreement is reached between these two other parties?
First, let me just clarify. I misspoke earlier. It's eight, the second club has to be started within 18 months after the completion of construction of the private. I think I said commencement before, but it's completion.
And so, so if you wouldn't mind just to turn around and just, just tell the public that again?
Sorry. The public beach club, per contract of the city, has to be constructed within 18 months after the completion of construction of the private beach club. I think I misspoke earlier and said commencement of construction. So within 18 months after completion of the private, the public would have to commence construction.
Would have to commence. So still the same question. What protection does Asbury Park, the city of Asbury Park have that this agreement is going to be followed through? You can reach an agreement with this other company, build your beach club, and for whatever reason, that company goes bankrupt, out of business, or for whatever reason chooses not to follow through. What protection does the city of Asbury Park have?
Asbury Park is a party, the city of Asbury Park is a party to this agreement that we're discussing, with both the redevelopment agreement and the subsequent developer agreement. So it's that contract that would protect the city of Asbury Park. Oh, it's an enforceable contract, just like, sorry. It's the same enforceable contract.
I'm sorry?
It's the same, in fact, the city has been asserting its contractual rights under that agreement as to other things other than the beach club. It's like any contract that you would sign.
So that potential does exist that the pool club or beach club would be built, and then the other club doesn't get built for whatever reason, and then just have to live with what's there and not having the second part of it fall through?
I, yeah. I, I...
I doubt the city of Asbury Park would sit by idly, do nothing since they're a party to that contract, and they would have, they would have a stake in that outcome. They would just sit by idly and let what we just described happen.
This, this was not testified to, so...
And that's not part of this. I'm not trying to be courteous.
Yeah. Well, I understand it's just part of what was brought up just now about the 18-month period commencement, and then, of course, that changed. That's all right as well. I'm just concerned that we're going to be left in a situation where there is one beach club, and the one that's being, being done for the, for the public doesn't get followed upon.
Got a mayor and council and a city definitely that you have to go and talk about.
Well, it's, it's...
Not a discussion.
It's just much easier to keep something from happening than try to undo something.
That's the answer to the question. City of Asbury Park is a party to this. They're there to protect your rights as well.
Anybody else have any other questions of the witness?
Hello. Elizabeth Cashhour, 1501 Ocean Avenue. It seems that a lot of this is contingent upon, a lot of this relationship is contingent upon the redevelopment plan. And the redevelopment plan, as you stated, has an expiration date. Does anybody know when it expires so we can consider...
Actually, that question has been asked a number of times, and it, and we don't know it.
I actually have it on the computer right now. Yeah. It's 30 years after the date the city council approved it, which was in 2002.
Okay. So we...
So roughly 2032, roughly.
Thank you.
But that was testified by a board member, not by an attorney.
Yeah.
Just saying.
I'm just reading off of the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, it's probably pretty close. Anything else on the public? Any questions? Okay. Does the, I'm guessing that our witness is relieved?
That's correct. I have no further questions for the witness.
Okay. All right. Okay. Does, does the, does anyone on the planning board have any comments that they would like to make?
Yeah, I think it was very interesting. I understand that the city would protect us in the case, in the instance that they faulted on building the second, the public beach club. I just wondered, is one of our remedies that Asbury Partners would have to build to them, if there's something, if there's something...
Once again, that's a comment, and that's not really a question. It's just a statement. We, we, planning board members can make statements as well. Any, any other comments from the planning board members?
It might be helpful before we vote, they could restate kind of what the charge of this body is.
Okay.
Well, we still have to...
We still have to hear the, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. Any, quite, any other comments from planning board members?
I guess my only comment is, can I remember we went through a long period of listening to testimony on this the first time around? And, you know, the plan hasn't changed since 2021.
No.
The underlying ordinances, the waterfront, redevelopment planning haven't changed since 2021. And I think, from my perspective, that's kind of what we need to look at, is what is the law? What was the plan? Since nothing's changed, you know, from my perspective, I'm not sure that we need to, practically, how to say this. I feel like nothing, nothing underlying has changed, so I feel that the, my vote would be to continue to allow what was already approved.
Anything else from planning board members? Okay. Motion to open public comment session.
Second.
Okay.
One favor.
All right. Okay. If anybody from the public would like to make a comment, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm going to step down from the desk. I have my back to everyone.
Go, go for it. Okay. Like we said, three minutes and I believe that we need name, well...
Yeah. You're actually going to testify now, so you have to swear. Not only I would have to get your address...
I'm happy to write it for you, but like, I can't go on TV with my address. That's fine.
No, I'm not going to ask you.
Okay. Thank you.
Please raise your hand. You solemnly swear or affirm. The testimony you're about to give will be the church of church.
I do.
State your name again for the record.
My name is Ally Geiger-Kanna.
And you are a permanent resident of the city of Asbury?
I am.
Okay. Go ahead. Three, wait, just a second.
I just wanted to reply to your comment that nothing has changed since 2021, but it's 2024, and I would opt to argue that that's a big change. If they have been struggling this long to agree to get someone to build a public pool, that's insane. If I had to beg a man to marry me for three years, I should walk away from that man. That, I shouldn't give romantic advice here. You are correct. But I'm just going to say also, the fact is, we can't even answer whether or not this company is looking forward into the future to determine what will happen at the waterfront. As everyone here has agreed, there are current laws coming down the pike to discuss what our landscape will look like and what is safe in the face of climate change. And we have been watching climate change for the last two and a half years. Last September, cars were floating down D.L.A. Drive, which, and Wesley Lake Street. That was not great for those cars or the environment or for anybody's blood pressure watching it. So to answer your comment, which is not a question, so I can't really answer it, but like, two and a half years is a long time, and all, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you for your time. I hope you have a lovely evening, and I really appreciate being here. I'm thrilled to be a part of this community, and I'm thrilled to be among so many people who are so fierce about protecting it.
Anyone else that would like to make a comment? Any other comments? Okay. Go ahead.
Please raise your hand again, sir. You solemnly swear or affirm. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Steven Saden.
And stop it, please.
S-A-D-E-N.
Thank you.
My only question is, will there be any, it's not a question.
Statement, I'm sorry, it's a comment.
It's not a question.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. I realize...
It's okay.
I get it.
Go ahead.
I want to know if, oh, I did it again. The architectural drawings that were submitted, that will continue to be part of what is eventually built? There won't, how do I ask this without asking a question? Is this going to change? That's all I want to know. Can, can they, can the defendant, the witness and lawyer, can, can that change in the next three years?
You're supposed to tell us what you think.
What's being presented?
You're supposed to tell us what you think now.
Oh, I'll tell you what I...
DIX, there you go. Tell us what you think.
Tell us what...
I'm concerned that the building will change architecturally and that our building will be 1501 Ocean. And yes, it is full of rich people. Some of us. Will that building, it seems to me that the building will affect not just our building, but other buildings in the neighborhood. And I'm concerned about the fact that it's gone through so many different variations, the architectural drawings, and whether at some point it'll be an eight-story beach club as opposed to right now, supposedly it is a one and a half-story building. But of course, that doesn't appear to be clear either. And I'm not quite sure why it is we don't actually know the detail on this. It seems like it's very vague. And that's just my feeling, that it's vague. But it does seem that everybody in this room, and we've talked about this in our own building in conversations, that we actually don't know what that building is going to be. Why do we have questions about that? Because it affects our neighborhood. It affects property values. It affects climate change. It affects anything. So anyway, that's my story.
Thank you. Sure. I would say that you need to look at the approval documents for this project, which destituously details what is allowed and what will be constructed under this agreement.
What was approved? Because the plans exist. What was approved? It exists in the planning office. They're there.
There's a, there's a copy of the documents available.
Yeah. They're, they're online also. They all exist.
Thank you.
To, I mean, maybe to his concern is, they can't build or do anything other than that.
Right.
Currently, they have to build what's approved.
Right.
Please raise your hand.
Ellen, Ellen Michelson, 1501 Ocean Avenue.
Thank you. You solemnly swear or affirm. The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
My understanding at the final planning board meeting in November of 2021 was that at that time, we were told that there would have to be new engineer, a new plan submitted to the engineering, I think it was the engineering department and then the environmental department, and that because of the FEMA ruling, that the level of the water table was such that the grounding, or I don't know the technical terms, were going to have to be raised by, I don't remember whether it was three or five feet, and that in doing that, the, it would extend the maximum height above what was allowed. And therefore, the plans were going to have to be resubmitted, redrawn, resubmitted. And to my understanding, that has not yet happened. I just want to clarify where along this process that is being considered tonight that would take place.
What I can tell you is that any condition, it's a 12-page resolution, lots of conditions are finally approved. All of those conditions have to be satisfied before the applicant could move the project. Whatever those conditions are, there's numerous conditions regarding engineering, probably some architecture. I don't know. I remember it has 12 pages.
Is that available to the public?
Absolutely.
The resolution is a public document.
Absolutely.
And where would, where would we find that?
On the website.
On the planning board website, there's, there's resolutions for every single application that we've ever, we've ever heard. All the documents are there.
Extremely detailed resolutions.
I, I, I will look for it. And I'm sorry, I'm just, I am going to ask a question, just so I can understand.[1743.88] The vote, the vote that you're going to take, what does a yes vote mean and what does a no vote mean?
A no vote means that the board has decided that what they have told us insufficient or incredible to grant the continuing application of this. And also, in this case, regardless of the outcome of the vote, that does not mean the project gets denied or the project is terminated. Project, as I said in the very beginning, those that ordinance has not changed. Up until the end of the redevelopment, for the next six or seven or eight, up to eight years, you can still build the project.
Thank you.
Please raise your hand, you solemnly swear affirm testimony about to give you the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and your address.
Catherine Healy, 8th Avenue. Great, it's a small street. I have to make this fast because I have to get home, put my kids to bed. But just coming up here, semi-echo Ellen and just state my overall concern with where the project was left, how much time has passed and the document from FEMA, being a homeowner in town, having flood insurance ourselves, what that would mean for the city. Again, based on what you had told Ellen, maybe this is not the time or the place, based on all the other steps and all the other committees, what have you that need to go through this, but just feeling really concerned about the FEMA document from three years ago. Thank you.
I, I succumb to my time.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, motion to close public.
So, second.
Okay.
Second.
Jennifer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes open.
Okay, as, can we get just a quick summary of what we are voting on?
Yeah.
To make sure that the planning board members are clear.
52 of the principal issues of law. It's essentially continuation of the applicable laws that existed at the time and still exist today to this project. That's all you're doing, you're not, you're not extending site plan approval, your site plan approval hasn't expired, that's all you're doing.
And I think that one other thing that we might want to mention, Jack, is that if any planning board member chooses to vote no, we always ask the reason why you would vote no. And no judgment, just so that it's on record.
A lot of people voted yes or no.
Right, and that, that would be true on any application, so. Okay, all right. I'd like to make a motion to approve this application?
For the extent, for the.
To, for the extension of the two years?
One second.
All right, one second. Okay. Thank you.
James Bonanno.
Yes.
Eric Galloppo.
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman.
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo.
No, and I'll tell you why, so. You know, just to clarify for everybody, you know, as it's been said, they have the right to build under the waterfront, build what they said they could build, under the waterfront redevelopment and until it expires. And they're just asking now for protection that if you change a law, but as long as that waterfront plan doesn't change until the expiration, they're still going to be able to build what, what they can do under the plan. And it's unlikely the waterfront plan will change because both the city and the developer have to agree to any changes to the plan. So I'm voting no because, you know, Madison Marquette, who's the San Diego Harbor, still hasn't given this approval. I'm sorry, Asbury Partners, you've got to find something, you've got to do some leverage, you've got to get that. It's been, it's been years that this is in the making and if you want to build it, you better do something. So I vote no, not to extend the time.
Okay.
Next.
Jen Sauter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin.
Yes.
Chairman Kurzak.
Yes.
State your name, please.
Okay. All right, can I motion, get a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Daniel, am I, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Nope.